In service to the city of Nacogdoches. We are grateful to the many individuals who are employed by our city and to those citizens who volunteer in a variety of roles. As a council, make us honest stewards and may our work tonight be blessed with insight, understanding, and wisdom. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves in a spirit of cooperation in deliberating matters that will impact our city today and in the future. Amen.
Amen.
So I'd like to open our meeting tonight for August 6, 2019. And first, we have community recognitions. So if Ed Poole, Miles McCall, and Steve Davidson would join me up here, please. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. So, tonight, we are honoring the Rotary Club's mobile library that was started around six years ago. This group has fulfilled a need that we've had in our city because our public library does not have the staff or the resources to have a mobile library. And I'm gonna let, since this was your brainchild, I'm gonna let Ed tell us a little bit about the program.
Okay. It's a wonderful program and I've had lots and lots of support. But we operate in the summer when the kids are out of school. And statistically, we found out that children that do not read over the summer actually back up during the summer. So when they leave school in June, if they don't do something during the summer months, then in September, they're in more shape than when they left. And so the availability of having books is a wonderful thing. We partnered with NISD in their summer feeding program, which allowed us to instantly have access to the children. Work with over 150 children a week. A couple of days a week, we're at the Boys and Girls Club with Steve's group. And just it's been a wonderful experience. The kids are so excited to get on the trailer and to find a book, and we allow them to keep them if they want to. So it's just a wonderful thing.
Well, that's great. We have a little something for each of you. These are bricks from the Brick Streets of Nacogdoches. They, they, yes, they reminisce. Yes. So our hope is, for my city, is that when you see this, you will think about how grateful your city is for the work that you've done and the contribution you make. So, thank you very much.
That was my skinny side.
Of course. Thank you. Okay. And now we are moving to our open forum. Ann Keenan has signed up to speak. Come on forward, Ann.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, well, I just wanted to invite you to an event. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if you guys are like me, you know, you have a lamp or toaster or piece of jewelry or something, and it breaks, and you go, dang it, you put it aside and you check it hadn't been fixed yet, and eventually you go buy another one at Walmart for $8. And eventually you clean up and it all goes to the landfill. And that happens to everybody, and it's super frustrating. So I heard, I was in Australia and I heard about this international organization called Repair Cafe. So we are gonna host the first, well, the library did a small one, but this is gonna be a major repair cafe. And I'm inviting everybody, all of you guys and everybody to come on Saturday, September 14th, from 10 to 3:00. We're gonna try to make it an event. In addition to just having volunteers and tables with lots of tools and materials, people will be bringing broken things. Ideally, when you bring a broken tool, you're not just dropping off for someone to fix, you're gonna help fix it yourself and watch and see how it's done and learn a new skill that you can pass on to other people. And eventually, you know, Nacogdoches will be famous as a city that never throws anything away. So anyway, I'm passing these out to you guys and hope that you can come. And if anyone wants to volunteer, let me know. My phone number's on the flyers.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. We will now move to our items to be removed from the consent agenda. And if a council member would like to pull something, if not, Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I don't wanna pull item D from the consent agenda, but I would like the city engineer, if he could, and he wouldn't mind, if he could please explain. I'd like to know a little bit about the methodology and the plan for how water lines are picked to get fixed and how you decide the size and all that.
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, Steve Bartlett, city engineer. And it's a great question, and I'll probably answer it for water and sewer lines, if that's okay, both, because there's some different answers. And so I used to joke that we could take darts and throw it at a map and come up with a water line project, and it's still probably true, because we've got a lot of infrastructure problems and a lot of things to fix. So it's difficult to prioritize them, much like the discussion we've had on streets, picking worse streets. And so it gets slightly subjective. In the case of sewer lines, we do TV camera work. So we have a full-time crew that goes around and with a TV camera system, and we TV all of our sewer lines. It's a highly exciting thing to watch at night. And so we look at these lines and we look for lines that are in disrepair. And so those often identify lines that you and I can't see with our eyes, and we think they're working, and half the pipe's gone. And so that's when we come to you with these projects. So a lot of that's based on our own camera work that we do. And that truck travels the city just TVing lines every day that they can. So in the sewer world, that's kinda how we get there. In the water world, we can't run the camera through it. And so we are based mostly on what we find out as repair frequencies. So we are hopefully in the process, in the near future, of developing a neat work order system, which is gonna mimic what you and I saw for potholes, our pothole heat map and things we produced. We're hoping to begin to produce that in the future for utility repairs, specifically water lines. But right now, we just accumulate work orders and we rely on folks in those departments to say, you know, we fixed this water line behind City Hall 12 times. And so it begins to get on a bad list on the wall. So when we come up with repair stuff each year, we sit down with all of our field staff and our engineering staff and just try to identify those lines that have been either undersized or 75 to 100 years old or 50 years old, or just have just repair after repair, and we've had out-of-service time with them. So it's slightly subjective, it's judgmental, but basically, we are still trying to fix the worst ones first, or the undersized ones first. And I hope that was a general enough answer for you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item number six is a public hearing. Consider a request for specific use permit for a light manufacturing company. Good evening, Mr. Manti.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm here to present a specific use permit for a light manufacturing company. Usually, light manufacturing companies, those kind of companies where it's a little bit industrial, but it has no adverse impact, no chemicals, spillage, or any significant impacts. And so we do allow them in a commercial zone if the council votes on a specific use permit. As you can see on the map, that's the location map. Currently, it's vacant, and some of the uses along that area, we have the Coca-Cola bottling company and some other industrial and commercial uses along the loop. So the applicant chose that site because of its proximity to the loop and considering the fact that the loop is a potential state interstate. And so we feel it's a good location to locate such a light manufacturing company. The lot is about 3.3 acres, and the applicant plans to develop in phases. They intend to grow to almost 100,000 square feet by the end of the development stages. So the lot is currently vacant, and based on site plans that was provided to us, we believe the applicant will do everything to meet all our subdivision and zoning regulation. I have an area showing the parcel. To, to the west of it, it's outside the city limits, but everything to the east and to the north and south is within the city limits. For zoning, it's currently Zone B2, and our ordinance allows a specific use permit to allow a light manufacturing in the B2 zone. To the north and south, we also have the B2 zone. To the east of it is also a B2 zone. So staff believes that this development, this development and the SUP, if approved, will not change the zoning of the property and it will stay as is. Only an SUP will be added to it. Looking at the future land use map, based on the 2003 comprehensive plan, the area was designated as commercial uses. The proposed use, like I said earlier, it's a little bit of commercial and industrial mixed together, in my opinion. So staff believes it's in line with the 2003 comprehensive plan. And one of the key elements in the comprehensive plan is to promote vibrant and viable commercial and industrial areas, supported by a quality community, offering many assets and opportunities for economic development. So our comprehensive plan calls for allowing some areas to have a mix of industrial and commercial uses to promote economic developments and viable developments within the city. And so as you drive along that area, you realize that there's a little bit of commercial uses and industrial uses that are, that are doing well, that are mixing well within space. So staff believes this use does not violate the 2003 comprehensive plan. For an SUP to be approved, we do look at some factors, one of them being compactability. Drive around the area shows that the area has some sort of heavy industrial uses and commercial uses. So we believe this development is, will not be anything new within that area. It'll blend well with existing uses. It's also an orderly growth and development, looking at the location, its proximity to the loop. We believe heavy trucks coming in to and fro from the site would be easily, would easily assess the site and will not have any adverse impact on any commercial or residential use. Supporting facilities is one factor we consider, and that would involve making sure there are utilities and any other requirement that will make the development went well in the area. And staff has reviewed that. But one second, I want to point out that the site plan being shown on site is just a preliminary site plan. Once the SUP is approved, staff, the applicant will present another site plan where staff will go into details and make sure everything that was shown on the site plan is in conformity to our subdivision regulations. We also want to look at driveway and parking. As you can see on site, there's a driveway that makes the site easily accessible. The applicant has provided more than required parking for now, and as the development expands, we would also look at the parking and driveway to make sure it's in conformity to textur regulation and safety and all those things that make a development complete. In terms of nuisance, for now, based on the model of the applicant, we have not identified any nuisance with regards to chemicals or any of that sort. But so, and so staff has no conditions to avoid nuisance, because based on the model presented to staff, it looks like there'll be none of such nuisance or negative impact from this development. But since it's an SUP, I believe that in the future, if there are any issues, the city council can always relook at it and see and try to find ways to mitigate any of the nuisance that might come in the future. But for now, it looks like it's a clean energy development, and we do not foresee any of that sort. The applicant has proposed to do more than the required landscaping ordinance. He, based on our discussion, he told us he likes to see things looking beautiful on site, and so his landscaping requirement would even be more than what the city requires. So it's a solar energy, and I don't really, this will be the first of its kind in the city. I believe they produce solar panels and things that are related to clean energy. And so I have, the picture on the screen is showing some solar panels on the windows, and that, those are the kind of stuff they produce. If you can just ask in the picture, the window panels, and they put solar stuff on the roof as well. So I have pictures here showing the side view, it's vacant from the loop and from the eastern part of it. A picture showing the north, south, and west, eastern boundaries of the property. And as you can see, it's along the loop, and most of the development in this area, it's all commercial and industrial. So key points to note, the development will be the first of its kind in the city. The location is along the loop and will blend well with surrounding industrial uses. And the development is a low-intensity industrial use. There's still reason for potential nuisance or impacts to the area, like I mentioned, but none has been identified as of now. And the applicant has assured staff there will be no adverse impact with this development. PNZ approved this development on July 8 with no conditions. They felt it was a good addition to the city, looking at the economic impacts and its location. And we did send out notification to people who live within the 200 feet, and nobody responded in opposition or in approval of the development. Just to bring my presentation to an end, and I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So that is a public hearing. So is there anyone here that would like to speak against this special use permit? Anyone here speaking for? Yes. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Michelle Ray. I'm the production manager for Solar Energy. And so I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We're the largest producer of solar-powered attic fans. And so they have maxed their production capacity in New Mexico and have several products that have been out as prototypes but haven't been able to be in full production. So actually, this week, we're in the midst of training to prepare some of the first basement ventilation systems that have, are all, have the option to be solar-powered. That particular product mitigates radon, dehumidifies, and freshens the air in the house. And so they make a Solara Day product, which is a light that mimics a skylight. It's really, I'm excited to be here because they're products that I know I want in my home, and I'm ready for us to start selling them. So it is one of the cleanest environments I've ever worked in. Dennis is over-the-top clean, and when I'm training my employees, I tell them, if you remember your grandmother's kitchen, that's how clean we want our, we package in white boxes. And I'm like, if you're constantly washing your hands, we're never getting anything done. So we've gotta keep it, keep it perfectly clean. And so a real attention to detail, like he said, and just a meticulousness of, that's how we want our production line, and so that's how we want our facilities. So I'm, we're employing about, didn't count exactly, but about seven people now, and we're just in that first stage of production. And we plan, we're in a leased building, hoping to get 15 to 20 until we max out the space requirements there. And then when we get into the new building, we'll be able to bring on additional product lines and really get up to speed. Do y'all have any questions on?
Well, I like the products, and I think it'll make a very good impact on the city, the community, and the state. What about the batteries? Isn't there a battery backup system for these? Are there gonna be storage batteries?
No. For most of them, they truly only run when the sun is out. The basement ventilation is the only, and maybe, no, for us, it's the, the basement ventilation is the only one right now that even offers a house power option. Otherwise, that's one of my favorite things, when, if you wanna come by and see it, we have a solar, an example, and you take the attic fan outside, it begins spinning, you come back in, and it stops. So truly, they're solar-powered, on when the sun's out, off when it's not.
Okay. Because I have information that I was given that due to cloudy days, et cetera, whatever, in the timeframe it takes to recharge compared to a sunny day, that there was a backup battery.
If they have one, it's possible, because our owner is an inventor. And so there are products that are in development that I don't know about. And so it is possible that he has that on the back burner or somewhere that I just don't know about.
Yeah, I read that on Dennis' page.
Okay. Yes. I wouldn't surprise me, because today I found out we're making this product, and yet we have this one in development, hopefully to bring it on the next six months. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I also wanted to echo that. Thank you for coming to Nacogdoches and for providing the, not just the jobs, but the products that you are providing. I think that's great. This question might be fairly, I'm not sure. What mechanism is there, if anything, if we need to make amends to the special use permit, if, say, a nuisance does come up during the building or something like that? What can we do after the fact?
Okay. So that specific use permit, so it's based on conditions. So in my previous experience, the council can put a condition that we are approving it, but if anything comes up in the future, we would like to revisit with you again. So, something like that. So that makes it, it covers for everything else.
Is there that sort of provision in there?
Yes, I believe, yeah, I believe we can do that. Unless...
Well, can we pause for just a moment? Can we hold that thought for just a moment?
Okay.
And I needed to ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak for this, since it is a public hearing? Yes, Ms. Philpott? And we'll come back to questions.
Larissa Philpott. I am the President and CEO of the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation, and just here today to express Nedco's excitement for this development in our community. It's exactly the kind of manufacturer that we have been looking for. They are excited to be in Nacogdoches because of who Nacogdoches is and the amenities that we provide here today. So I appreciate your consideration of it and your consideration of the economic impact of this development on our, on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward, Mr. Ship. Good evening.
Andrew Ship, Ship Law Firm. I just wanna, to echo Larissa's excitement, I think, as you all know, I'm a fan of jobs in Nacogdoches. So I think, I've done some research, like Mr. Bolden. I think this company is gonna be an excellent community member, and I think we should support, we should support them, give the special use permit, and welcome the new jobs that they're gonna bring.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. So, Mr. Manti, let's come back up and have our discussion with...
Great. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sure. Of course.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council member, very good question. So there is a mechanism, specifically within, in our code, I think it's 118-174, it's in chapter 118. And it speaks to an actual hearing. It is a revocation. So there's certain conditions, I think there's three subcategories. But if an SUP is granted, and after it has been granted, there are certain time limits that it has to be enacted, can't sit out there on a shelf indefinitely. But once it goes into place, after, you know, in this situation, the manufacturing facility is underway. And this would not happen, and this is just a hypothetical. But say, it turns out that the solar-powered attic fans are actually diesel-driven, which wouldn't happen, then if there is a material misrepresentation or even a material error in the application, then there can be this hearing process, certainly due process is afforded the person that has that, and hearing and notice, and, but you can actually have a hearing and a revocation if they don't satisfy that. If it's something that's really gross or out there, there are other options, civil actions, as well as, I think, criminal provisions. But there is a specific revocation provision. Very good question.
Is there a renewal process every three years, 10 years, 20 years? Or like, hypothetically, going down your diesel path, if they started making batteries and just pouring the sludge down the...
Yes, I, that would, that would...
Besides the federal issues, there, is there some sort of a...
Whether the sun's out or not, that would kick in the revocation process. But I, I don't know that there's, that there's a fuse on that, so to speak.
Got it.
Yeah. But there is, I think, on the front end, interestingly enough, I think there's 180 days to address that. I'd have to go back and look at that. But on the backside of it...
And I suppose if they were making batteries, not that I'm opposed to batteries, but if they were making batteries, then there'd be a different special use permit that would be necessary? Is that the idea? Because it's not materially the same as what was granted today?
Yes. If they, if they started producing it and that is different from what they presented in their packets, then that is different from the specific use permit. So they would have to come to the council again to prove that.
Got it.
I don't think that that would mean if there was a different product line, but if the, if the specific use permit, if it, if it varied and then there were other conditions necessary and went outside that initial scope, then I think that can be rediscussed.
Okay.
And my question really wasn't in the area of manufacturing the batteries.
Yes, sir.
It was the storage.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good question. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Manti? No? 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 Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special use permit for a light manufacturing company on Lot 17-A, City Block 95, parcel 26728.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve the specific use permit, agenda item number six as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number seven, consider approval of the city's partially funded, self-funded health insurance plan. And, good evening, Mr. Summers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, appreciate the opportunity tonight to come before you to propose the upcoming benefits renewal for the 2019-2020 plan year. Little background, I know most of y'all have seen this before, but just kinda wanna get a, give a little history again of what type of medical program the history, the city has offered really over the past 10 years or so. It's been a partially self-insured medical plan. And what that means is that the city pays, Blue Cross, or Blue Cross Blue Shield pays claims on behalf of employees and dependents of the city when they have a claim, based on the plan designed, though obviously is approved by the city council. And on a monthly basis, the city reimburses Blue Cross Blue Shield back for those particular claims. That makes up roughly 75% to 80% of the cost of the claims on, of the plan, the overall plan, in a plan year. And then there's another 15% to 20% of the cost that are really called fixed costs, which have to do with administrating the plan and reinsurance to protect the plan as well. The administration has been done through Blue Cross Blue Shield for the last 10 years. They also, when you, when you use them as the administrator, you also get their, their network, their PPO network that comes along with that. And they've even also provided the reinsurance as well. And that protects the city on large claims, over $100,000. And then all claims under $100,000, there's a maximum liability that the, that the city would, would have to pay on that. Real brief education on partially self-insurance, and I'll get into more details as we go through this. The city also offers what we call ancillary products. The city pays for life insurance for employees. They offer voluntary life insurance for employees, dependents, spouses, dental insurance, vision insurance, disability, all on a voluntary basis. As a matter of fact, all of the plans that are offered, even the medical insurance, is on a voluntary basis. It's not mandatory. Just kind of a background on, on what the city actually offers the employees in a benefit package. The next thing I wanna go over is, is claims experience. You'll see what we call a year-over-year trend. You'll see the medical claims column, pharmacy claims, and then that administration and reinsurance cost claims. Those are the three things that we really look at when we're looking at history behind the plan. And you can see from June of 17th through May of 18th, you can see the medical claims came in a little over $1,001,000. And this year, unfortunately, it's up about 32%. It's up to $1,505,000 over the past 12 months. Pharmacy claims are up below $240,000 in that same period of time, too. Administration of reinsurance, the lowest number, but still up. These are fixed cost items, up around 14 and 1/2. So overall, almost a 30% increase year-over-year. So to say the least, it was a little bit more challenging than when I stood up here last year and gave the renewal report. Added a column this year on high-cost claimants, and this is some of the reasons. Obviously, HIPAA protects any information about any one individual. We can name them claimant 1 through 9, and these are your large claimants. You can see that we had one claimant so far, a little over $545,000. We'll safe to say that all these folks are on the plan still, so none have deceased, which is good, and hopefully they're getting the best care. But there are some very expensive claims out there that you can see. Remember, I talked about that $100,000 cap? So we have four... So, we have four claimants that have already reached that, that cap so far. Okay? I think it's real important also to give a fund balance history. This is something that I know Mr. Jeffers, Ms. Kerbo, have worked really hard, um, to make sure that we are, we're solvent in our, in our health insurance plan. And you can see over the years, we had had a dip in 2015 and 16, but over the last two years, uh, it's grown to a pretty healthy number. We'd like to obviously try to keep it that way. Our always strategic plan is to, when we put together funding rates that the city and the employees contribute to, that it is in between the expected cost and the maximum overall cost. And I'll get into that in a minute. And it really protects us on any type of drawdown like we saw four, five years ago. Okay? You can see that where we started, October 1st of this year, we're a little over a million five, and we've had to draw down a couple hundred thousand dollars this year. It's because we're above the expected number that we, that we had last year. As you've seen, the claims are up, both pharmacy and medical claims are up quite a bit this year. But still, even though it's up that much, when you, when I get into this, you'll see that for the city, the drawdown number is only a little over 200,000 max that could draw down, which really helps us, again, keep that fund reserve very solvent. Okay? The next slide has a lot of numbers on it, I apologize, but I think it's important. These are the current funding rates. And actuarial folks on our team, Bank Corp. South, plus the help with Blue Cross's actuarial team, drive numbers to come to rates. Because a lot of people ask me, how do you get the rates? Is it the insurance company that gives you the rates? Well, they give you projected claim numbers and fixed cost numbers for reinsurance and administration, but no, they don't give you a, a rate like you would normally see, say, for your car insurance or homeowners or things like that. So, the city this year has contributed $600 a month for each employee that's on the plan, whether they take the base plan or the buy-up plan or any tier level. Okay? And then you'll see what the employees fund on a monthly basis. We have always, well, as long as, if I've been working with the city, there's always been a plan that is free to the employees, that is a zero cost. And I think Mr. Jeffers even told me this year that was off limits again. So, I wanted to make sure that, that that stayed intact, that for employee, they could choose to play, have a plan that does not cost them anything on a payroll deduction basis. And I think we've been able to deliver that when you see the next, the next slide. But let me stay here for a second. So, when you take this numbers, and you'll notice the counts for each, that's how many people are on each plan, that changes every month, of course, you know, some people come and some people go. But if on a static number, if that was the case for a full year, the contributions from the city would be really right at 2.8 million, 2,797,000. The expected cost for the 2018-19 year, based on the prior year's history, was a little over 2.6 million. The maximum cost was right at 3 million. So, again, that theory that we were always trying to fund between expected and maximum was in play. But you can see that over the last 12 months, it's been running right up against that maximum number. So, that's why I was saying at the end of the day, even if we hit the maximum total, that's why you buy the aggregate insurance, 'cause it's the maximum, um, we would draw down a couple hundred thousand dollars is all we would draw down, instead of maybe four, five, six hundred like it was several years ago. So, that's where we are currently. So, then for the, the upcoming plan year, this is the recommended. The city was generous enough to budget a 10% increase to that number, uh, to get to 660. You'll notice on the base plan that those rates did not change any from where we were, even for the spouse, children, and family coverages. So, those rates will be left alone if someone wants to choose the base plan. Now, when you see some of the changes that we've recommended to the base plan, they're not as good as the base plan they have today. But in order to keep these rates where we were, or where they are, we needed to do some things, and I'll explain that in a little bit. On the buy-up plan, we did increase that 10%. So, it was in, it was in line with what the city was gonna contribute. So, they will see a 10% increase from where they were last year. So, if they were paying $62 this year, they'd be paying $68.20 next year. And remember, that's on a monthly basis. So, if everyone stays in the same category, which we know, it may change a little bit based on the open enrollment numbers, then the city, along with the employee contributions, would generate a little over $3 million, $3,40,000 rounded. The expected cost is 2,845, based on the plan design changes that we've made, and maybe some of the pharmacy changes that we're gonna make, too, that I'll, that I'll talk about. But the maximum is 3.2. So, again, we're in line with that theory with staying in between expected and maximum on a contribution basis. So, if the worst scenario, if we had the worst scenario, it'd draw down another couple hundred thousand, which would still keep us above a million dollars in fund surplus. So, that's the recommended payroll deductions and the recommended city contributions for the upcoming, the upcoming plan year. The next is some plan design. There's two plan design options currently. There's a base plan, again, that doesn't cost the employees anything. And there's a buy-up plan if someone wants to buy up to a richer plan. And you will see that on the deductible, co-insurance, a little bit there, and out-of-pocket maximums, it's, 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 it's a little bit more drastic, more drastic on the deductible than anything else. But in the, in the environment we live, a 750 deductible and a 1,500 deductible is a very, very rich plan. And 1,500 and 3,000 is, 3,000 is very, very normal, um, not only in, in governmental entities, but in the private industry as well. We didn't change the copays very, very much. The, that virtual visit, which is the, we implemented that, that last year, that's teledoc or video conferencing, has been very popular. It's free to people, staying the same. Member preventative through the ACA, and we, it's, it's free to people, they don't pay anything for that. Routine lab and x-ray is considered to be also a free service. Emergency room, we did increase that, that copay, a hundred dollars across the board, but we left the urgent care the same. We did tweak the prescription copays a little bit, and I also wanna talk about that. We're changing, we, our recommendation is to change to what's called more of an open formulary. You know, this kinda gets down in the weeds a little bit, but I think it's important. An open formulary, more to a closed formulary or performance-based formulary. I know Mr. Hens knows quite a bit about this, being in the business. Every fully insured plan that's sold in Texas today is on the performance or closed formulary contract. The county has gone to that two years ago. And if you're looking for government-type illustrations, in the school district, through, through Aetna, is on those same type of programs. The savings is there. The downside, there are drugs that are excluded, so I'll give you an example, if you're in the insulin family, there may be 50 drugs in the insulin family. Well, right now, if they're FDA-approved, they're all gonna be covered, maybe at different copay levels, but they're all covered. Going forward, there may be some excluded drugs in that particular family, that an employee, if they're taking that drug, might have to switch drugs. Now, there is some appeal processes, there's some things like that. If it's already been proven that they've taken this drug and it's worked, and they've taken others that, that does not work, and Blue Cross Blue Shield is actually very accommodating on things like that. There's also what's called step therapy, so, which means if you've, if there's an opportunity to take one drug that may be less cost on a generic basis, take that first and then move up to the drug needed. Again, if you've already been through that process as an employee, you wouldn't have to go through it again. And then prior authorization, just making sure that, so whatever the, the doctor prescribed is automatically covered, that goes through a prior authorization. Again, grandfathered if you're already on that. Yes, well, why do we do that? Well, there's, well, savings is obviously the biggest driver on that. When Blue Cross Blue Shield and Prime Therapeutics, who is their PBM, pharmacy benefit manager, ran the numbers, that's an estimated $200,000 savings to the city. Well, so that means to me disruption, right? That means there's gonna be people that have some disruption when that comes with it. But we're here as our agency in Nacogdoches. I know with Stephen Pearl's office and HR, um, we're here to help. One of the biggest conversations that we had during all these meetings is people in their, in the health, in their health, in the medicine they're taking. And the last thing we wanna do is, is hurt someone, anyone, I think would say that, if it pertains to the medicine they're taking. So, we're very sensitive to it. We've made this change to a lot of our customers, both fully insured and self-insured, and it's gone over without a hitch. But doesn't mean it can't have a hitch. Just want everyone to be aware that there's gonna be issues that's gonna come up. But we need to be, I think, proactive. We discussed this last year. We did not make the change last year. I think it's because we had such a great year, we didn't wanna rock the boat, but it's something that I feel like, in our industry, obviously I wouldn't make the recommendation that, that we move forward with that. The copays really aren't changing that much, so they're not gonna see that. I think the biggest thing is a little hassle at the end of the day when it comes to having to maybe go through prior authorization or step therapy, or maybe have to change from one drug to the next. We had an open forum meeting the other day, telling the employees that we were gonna propose this, and we did have great questions, had a good turnout. Mr. Jeffers, Mr. Pearl attended, um, and we, I think we answered a lot of questions. We give us two months before the renewal actually starts in October to make sure that everyone is on, that everyone understands what's going on. And letters would also go out from Blue Cross Blue Shield to the individual if there's gonna be an impact. So, those are, that's probably, to me, I know that when people look at the plan, they're gonna look at, oh, that deductible went from 1,500 to 3,000. Of course. But once you get past that, it's the day-to-day usage, especially medicine, that people really have, you know, they're obviously very sensitive to that. And so, I, I took probably more consideration on that than I did some of the plan design changes that we thought were necessary in order to keep the plans, the, the rates the way they are today. Okay? Insular coverages. This is something that we, uh, we actually go out, and maybe wanna talk about bidding and things like that, too, and how we do that, but on insular coverages, we actually take a look at the marketplace every year, make sure that, 'cause these are strictly price-driven when we look at voluntary term life insurance. And we're really happy to show you that tonight, that the employer-paid life insurance is, we, we were able to get a 12.2% rate reduction. Everything had a rate reduction except the voluntary dental, and that was a, that was a flat, no increase. So, for the voluntary term life, 10%, vision, 10.2%, voluntary long-term disability, 23%. And the line of duty benefit will be in there, and a better definition, I mean, we're talking about own occupation riders and things like that for fire and police. So, we were very, very pleased with that. Again, these are voluntary, but it affects their paycheck, of course. And so, we wanted to make sure that we're always looking to try to improve that particular, that particular product. So, with that, I'll open it up for, for any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, first, let's see if there's anybody that has a comment, um, who's here. Not necessarily questions for Mr. Summers, there were comments towards the council. Okay, none? So, council, questions for Mr. Summers?
I'll make some, you have some questions, go for it.
Mine's probably gonna be way more simple than Mr. Hens's. Um, that is where my eyes went, um, in preparation for this meeting, is the, the, the increase in the deductible, which we talked about doing a, and we did do a cost of living adjustment, and for people have to use that, that turns that into a wash, right? And so, I, I do think that that's problematic and concerning, and my question is what the justification for that is.
Utilization drives cost.
Okay.
Okay? There was two rules of, there were, there was two discussions in our meeting. Do we raise the rates across the board on the base plan? Or do we adjust the plan design? And if you adjust the plan design, you are affecting folks that just use the plan. If you raise the rates, you're affecting everyone, even though they may not use the plan. So, one of the two things had to happen, either raise the rates, leave the plan design the same, or do, do like we did. So, that was the main justification for it.
Just because it was used a lot last year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's all, it's all in utilization. We wanna, again, stay out in front of it. We hate to be reactive. We would much rather be proactive in the way we set up plan designs and some of even the new things that are coming down the pipe, such as health savings account plans and things like that. So, we meet quarterly, and we always talk not only about how the claims are going, but also new things that are on the horizon.
Thank you.
That's helpful. I think it's, it's good to know that utilization drives the cost, because it's not, it's not like our local providers, certainly not our pharmacies, but, or the doctors, they're not just raising rates and charging a higher rate. It is absolutely, and how much utilization there is. It's such a tightly, uh, regulated pricing mechanism that's in place, that there's, there's not really a whole lot at play. We don't, as an example, we don't get to, uh, set rates as a pharmacy. Couple things that I think are important to pull out of this, these are really generous plans. And so, that's, that's exciting for me. I appreciate that it's a, it's disappointing to go from 750 out-of-pocket as a deductible to 1,500, but we don't, internally, we, we don't even offer anything that rich, and we've got five different plans. So, I, I appreciate that we can do that, uh, for our city folks. The zero cost to the employee, I do think, I agree with, uh, Mr. Jeffers, I think that's a really important thing. We, we also feel like that is internally. And so, I would, I would simply echo that, too. I think there, there are a lot of folks that, even if it's a fairly nominal, uh, seemingly nominal 20, 30, 40 dollars, that's gonna be cost prohibitive for a lot of people. And so, I think it would push some of the people out. We really don't want that. As far as the closed formulary, fortunately, I live with the director of our pharmacy, and so I have to look pretty closely at the formulary, and, um, it's very similar to what we offer for ours, and we have 90 employees that are, that work at a pharmacy, or pharmacies. Um, and so, it's, that's not a big shock. One of the few things that I think stood out, uh, when it comes to PPIs or proton pump inhibitors like your Nexiums, those kind of things, there are an awful lot of OTC products that are available now, and those, those weren't covered, but she wasn't super concerned about that because of the availability of the OTC products.
OTC is over-the-counter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I did know that. I had that.
As far as a lot of the other ones, you, you mentioned your insulins, that is a really tricky thing. Healthcare is kind of a mess. You have so many, there are 50 available in some of these things, where you might have three or four or five new ones that come out this year, and they're incredibly expensive, in the thousands in some of these drugs cases, and they don't really do anything different than last year's or the years before, or the, or the generic versions. And so, we have a closed formulary for that reason, too, because there's not any, um, healthcare justification for actually paying for those.
Sure.
And so, I, I appreciate the steps you guys took to, to make sure that we could keep the zero out-of-pocket available, and e- even if that comes at, at this, it's not a big sacrifice.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Okay. Anyone else? No? You good?
No, I almost panicked when I saw that.
I know, I did.
But not as many, explaining, and I appreciate, uh, as Garth has stated, uh, the zero cost to employees.
Very important. To the whole committee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. So, Chair will entertain a motion. There's no further discussion.
Well, I make a motion to approve the partially self-funded health insurance plan offered by Bank Corp. South Insurance Services.
I'll second. Okay. Moved and seconded. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number eight, presentation on the 2019 Texas Blueberry Festival. We have the chamber here. Hello, Ms. Handler, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing good. How are you guys?
I see it on your blueberries.
Yes. Last official of this year. I'd like to take a minute to say thank you, Mayor Brophy, and council for letting us have a few moments to talk about the impact and what the Texas Blueberry Festival was able to do, and what we have fun doing. So, without further, I'm gonna go and hit a couple of those, and, um, if you will flip the slide for me. Oh, wait, I have it, don't I? Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the, uh, economic impact was over 24,000 people was estimated to attend the event. More than 40 vehicles participated in the Fun Case Car Show. And Brookshire Brothers reported that they sold out of pies and Izzy soda. That's, pies and Izzy soda, that sounds pretty good. That's, pies and Izzy soda, that sounds pretty good. Sold 560 flats of blueberries, which equates to 7,200 pints and 679 pounds of blueberries. And then the Blueberry Place, which, by the way, we were just a smidge concerned about their early berries, they reported that they had sold 500, or that there was picked, 570 pounds, which picked them out of all of their early blueberries. Also, I would like to tell you guys, thank you for having the, and allowing the Blueberry Festival to be on our brick streets, which is awesome. The Police Department, CERT, Fire Department, City of NAC, and the Chamber of Commerce for all of their hard work and dedication, because without each and every one of you guys, this would not have been the best Blueberry Festival ever on our 30th year. So I'm going to let Wayne come in and do some more.
Thank you, Grace. Good evening, Mayor members and the council. My name's Wayne Mitchell, and I have the pleasure of being the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I just survived my third Blueberry Festival. So this is the third opportunity I've had to come before you folks and, and present. And as, I've got to stop and acknowledge, Grace Handler, let me tell you something, without her leadership and, and drive and determination, this event could not be executed in the fashion it was. And I know that we're deeply indebted to her at the chamber, and I know the hundreds of volunteers and vendors and others are equally pleased with her performance, and we're hopefully going to coerce her back and do a leadership position next year in the same position, so that we can have success. Just a few items I'd just like to highlight in addition to this is the blueberry pancakes this year. The Quanis Club sold about 1,350 plates. That's 4,000-plus pancakes, blueberry pancakes. The Blueberry Dunking Booth, which is a new event sponsored by Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, and the United Way, had 150 adults and 100 children participate, raised over $330. The Blueberry Penny Press, which was a, really a project driven by our Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Sherry Morgan's here today, was a great idea, as she is a fountain of great ideas. And we pressed over 367 pennies and raised in that, in that project $185. The Fredonia Brewery reports that they had a great day, and all 288 of the commemorative festival glasses were sold within the first two hours of, of the festival. Hotel and motel stays, and Sherry's much better equipped to talk about these numbers than I, but some hotels reported they were sold out, and I can attest that I tried to get rooms for relatives and had a difficult time. And this continued through Sunday and Monday, so our objective of getting more heads in beds and extending the weekend, I think we took a real strong incremental step on that this year. NAC Valley Vineyard reported that the busiest weekend they've ever had since they've opened. Over 225 vendors reported that this was the best year ever. We made a conscious decision this year to reduce the number of vendors. The preceding year, we had about 270, and we felt as though we would be better served in giving better spots to the women and men that made the decision to be there. And the good news is it really resulted in more volume for the folks that we had in there, and I suspect we'll have a lot of early committers next year. The chamber sold out of our hundreds of blueberry T-shirts in our booth. The bottom line is this, I put this slide together myself, fun, fun, fun. There was great music entertainment this year. The committee goes through great lengths to strive to have new and innovative, innovative events going on, and, and exhibits like the Tipton Ford NASCAR attraction that had hundreds of participants, and my understanding was that the winner was a 10-year-old girl, that apparently she should be signed by NASCAR based on what I heard, so. And my favorite slide is the last one I have up here, because I did it. But it's miles and miles of smiles. I had the privilege of going around to all the various venues, and starting on Friday night at the Bluegrass Festival, which that group put on an unbelievable concert, the park was absolutely filled with lawn chairs and people, as early, getting placements as early as early afternoon before the event, or four, five, six hours before the event, and they just did a great job. We couldn't do this without the leadership of Grace and the hundreds of folks in the Blueberry Committee, the presenting sponsor, Tipton Ford Lincoln, the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that stepped forward to do a variety of different things during the course of the event. And I got to stop and say this, in view of recent events around the country in the past couple of weeks, I'm the, I'm, I'm the guy that frequently says I'm paid to worry about this event, and as much as I love it, the day of the event, I'll be candid with you, I worry about it, because I always have to be prepared for the unexpected. But the good news for me is under the leadership of Amy Mahaffey, the Police Department Chief Stevie and his staff, and the Fire Department, and the city staff, and you folks in the city council, we invest preceding this event literally dozens of hours in, in planning for the unexpected, having a Plan B. The, the manual that the, the Police Department and the Fire Department delivers to us is about a quarter inch thick, and I'll be candid with you, we read that thing because we are paid to worry, and to make sure that those 24,000, 25,000 people come here are safe, and we couldn't ensure that without the cooperation and the presence of our EMS, our police, our fire, and the city staff, the city council, and all the others that step forward. It, it's amazing, it's amazing cooperative effort, and, and, and we all, and City Manager, City Manager Jeffers has a slogan on his, on his emails that says, play nice, we all play nice, but we take it seriously. And I think it, you know, we'll, hopefully we'll continue that process and be even better prepared for 2020. I also want to thank Sherry Morgan and the Nacogdoches Convention and Visitors Bureau for their unbelievable efforts. Keep Nacogdoches beautiful. I always come in here on Sunday morning, usually about five or six, to see what mess I left in your city, and to check out your beautiful brick streets, and I'm always stunned at how well Keep Nacogdoches and, and the city staff cleans this, this place up. The Blueback Concert Committee and the work that they put in, the hundreds of vendors, and, and the thousands and thousands of visitors that came from as far away as Alaska and Washington, Alaska, Washington State and Florida, amazes me the numbers. There are even a few folks from my former neck of the woods in New England that have come down here. It's amazing. So our many sponsors are certainly critical to that, and so with that, I'd be delighted to answer your questions, but the last thought is thank you. Thank you for your commitment and the city's cooperation and all the things you do, and hopefully we'll do it even better in 2020.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Did you all have any questions? We appreciate it.
Mayor Roffey, if we, we would like to present to you officially the blueberry poster for the year, as we typically do, and we'd ask you and the council to come forward if you would.
Of course. Shall we run here? Jake, can I get you a Mr. Wong? If y'all don't mind just dropping out a little bit, so we can see a little more volume. Yeah, there we go. Perfect, guys. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you. For those of you that don't know, Grace had a really hard year, and it was amazing that she stuck with it, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number nine, consider the 2019-2020 Convention and Visitors Bureau annual operating budget. Well, you're here. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I am well, thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're going to talk some, some money. Basically, our total income for this current budget year is 605,810. Our proposed budget, moving forward for the next fiscal year, is 565,000, which is a reduction, and that is in an effort to move away from pulling so much. It's our charge to present a balanced budget. Last year, we pulled $87,560 out of reserves. This year, we're only going to have to pull 17,000 out of that. So we made some pretty, in my opinion, some pretty impressive reductions along the way. In our expense category, due to the cost of living adjustment that employees received in our somewhat new status as contract employees to the city, that was something that we needed to adjust for as well. So our personnel expenses increased from 292,000 to 303, 500. We happened to, through attrition, lose our paid intern, she graduated, so we had an opportunity to explore saving about 7,000, just under $8,000, and doing away with a paid intern, and moving strictly to interns working for course credit. It's, that's okay. Anyway, it's all right. So the next, I think we skipped, yeah, okay. The next category is administrative expenses, and that covers the cost of my education and travel, as well as just the general day-to-day maintenance of the building. Administrative expenses reduced, we were able to reduce those by 10,000. It did include small decreases in postage, phone, and insurance, as well as reduction in traveling and continuing education for the director. We're looking at moving towards every other year attending conferences, and then in those off-years, which this year would be an off-year, we just really explore deepening our skillset of staff, so explore some more local, online, more affordable options. So still doing continuing education, but just looking at it a little outside of the box in an effort to save money, but also still being mindful of the importance of staying networked and connected to our peers in our industry. In our sales department, those expenses were reduced by over 5,000, with cuts primarily, again, in travel and continuing education. This budget is one where it really benefits from sponsorships and cooperative opportunities that we have with our community of partners. Marketing covers our advertising, which, you know, is one of our main charges, it also is one of our main expenses. We were still able to reduce those costs by about $30,000, not by endangering any of our media buys, but by moving towards a model where most of the creative is done in-house. And that is my past experience, we never had an advertising agency, we did all of that creative content in-house, and between Stephanie Fautinot, our marketing director, and myself, we feel confident that we'll be able to save a significant amount of money in this without compromising our representation of us as a destination. I was also able to negotiate down our website hosting cost by 6,000 a year, and I'm happy to say that that has afforded us the opportunity, opportunity in this upcoming fiscal year to launch an app. So we saved a little money, or we spent a little money, but it's going to be all right. Our total visitor service expenses were reduced by approximately $8,000. A lot of our budget this year, we're not, again, not ever going to compromise our visitor service or guest experience, because that's what we're selling. But we had a lot of upstart charging, our expenses this fiscal year for the new branding using, we have a knack for that, some new programs, we invested in new Christmas trees and things like that. So those are not costs that are going to recur this year, so that is where that savings came from. So that is it in a nutshell. You can sort of see how we fall, and that, my friends, is a balanced budget.
Is there anyone here that has a comment about the Convention and Visitors Bureau's budget, proposed budget? Okay, council, questions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay.
You stated that you reduce the marketing by 30,000?
Yes, sir.
And that would be travel and education, and you do more in-house design work?
In marketing specifically, most of those are creative costs that we have been outsourcing to Hancock, which is our advertising agency of record. So we would still go through them for the majority of our larger media buys, such as Texas highways, and still certainly utilize them. We're keeping that we have a knack for that, so we don't need, we'll be continuing on with that, so we won't have that cost, that's another one of those non-recurring costs. But every time we have them design and ad for us, we incur design fees as well, and we are very capable, staff is very capable, of taking on the design fees in-house without compromising the quality of them, of our messaging.
And that was going to be my question. I mean, like travel and education, you know, would it be beneficial for those that's going to do the in-house designs?
Well, that's, that's a good example of one of the ways, when I say deepening our skillset. So like last year, I was able to go to our annual conference, as well as TML, I was able to go to a lot of conferences, but there's conference fees and travel and hotel expenses. And while those are important, and certainly the networking and the connections that you make there are, they're invaluable, it's not realistic for us right now in this current, our current fiscal state, to do that yearly. So in this off-year, we will be able to do online courses for Adobe Illustrator or software design that will give us the tools that we can, and we already have the basic skillset, but we can continue to grow those skills that would allow us for that in-house design.
Very good.
Comments, questions? I have a couple. Your reserves, are they a set percentage?
We try to maintain the city standard of keeping it to 25%, and we are, we're just about, we're a little over 24%.
Okay, that's good. And then how did you, how do you calculate your room tax? You've, you've got an increase, I guess it's a little over 5%. Is that based on a percentage, or do you know something? Are you being hopeful?
I wish. Well, I looked in my Magic 8-Ball, asked it a question in the turntable. No, we actually, as most of us in the city do, rely on Pam Curbo in the finance department. They give us an estimate. Our lodging partners that are required to remit hotel occupancy tax do so through the finance office. The finance office then disperses that, and we receive our 72.5%. So Pam and I communicate, and we come up with an estimate based on the past, this current year's collection, what is reasonable, is there anything new on the horizon coming through that might change that? And we arrived at the 525,000 for, for this year.
Okay. Good. So, thank you. Very.
One quick thing, just, just a compliment. Sherry, you and your staff do such an amazing job, and run such a lean operation. I, I love the way you run a business, it's amazing, so thank you for what you do.
I appreciate that. The staff really, they are the, the heart of, of the Charles Bright Visitor Center, and it would be sad if it was just Sherry Morgan over there by herself, because certainly without Mike and Stephanie and Joanna and Cheryl, and the many interns that we're graced with, and it really is, it's a group effort, and it's also an honor and a privilege to represent Nacogdoches. It's, it makes me proud to be able to promote this town, and I kind of get braggy, it's not, not always pretty, but try and keep it safe.
Thank you. Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve agenda item number nine as it's written.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. We approve agenda item number nine as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, I'm great. Mayor, city council members, I'm going to be here talking tonight about operations and statistics for the animal shelter. Starting off with our mission statement, we are here to encourage the importance of responsible pet ownership. We want to educate our community about our code ordinances and state statutes in regards to animal control, and to promote the importance of spaying and neutering animals to reduce overpopulation and euthanasia. The city employs seven members at the shelter, myself included, and we have a lot of duties. There's a lot of things that people don't understand, they know we're there, but they don't understand what we do, or how much we do. And this is just a list of, there's a couple of slides here of just some of the things. We have administrative duties, customer service, we dispatch all animal control calls to our animal control officers, regular billing, coordinate with foster parents and animal rescue organizations to help find permanent homes for the animals when we can't get them placed locally. We do have close to 200 kennels at the shelter, and our kennel attendants are responsible for cleaning those shelters, cleaning those kennels and feeding the animals every morning while we're taking care of medications, heart room testing, vaccinations, euthanasia, which we do unfortunately have to do. And then we process animal intakes, reclaims, adoptions. We respond to all complaints within the city limits, and we enforce our code of ordinances, whether that's through counseling and education, or through citations. We do write citations, and we investigate animal cruelty problems, we've had some dogfighting issues, bike cases, and we do testify in court for those individual cases when necessary. We do provide animal care information, we work with the Humane Society in order to assist people with emergency health issues with their animals. We also put them in contact with the Humane Society, because they do have programs for lower-income families that have pets that need assistance with getting their animals spayed and neutered, so we don't have the overpopulation and more animals coming into the shelter. And I think I touched- And I think I touched on those things, but that's kind of what we do in a nutshell. One of our major responsibilities is we are the local rabies control authority for the county. So anytime there is a bite that breaks the sin, whether it's a scratch or a bite, the animal is required to be quarantined for a minimum of 240 hours. And that's in observation of the animal's behavior to see if we see any changes and anything that might indicate that that animal could potentially have rabies. And that's specifically for the health and safety of the person. Rabies is not curable. If you get it and you start exhibiting signs and symptoms, it's too late. So we need to make sure that we have that animal in hand in order to observe, make sure that that animal doesn't have any signs or symptoms. If it does during that timeframe, then that person would need to immediately seek out that post-exposure treatment and get that care that they need before it manifests in signs and symptoms and it's too late for them. So it's a very important role that we do cover. We do that for the entire county, so within the city limits, but then if the sheriff's department calls us and they have a bite case, we do cover that with their assistance. So we are the quarantine facility for the county for any bite cases. At this time, there are no vets that are certified at the moment to quarantine. And they have to be inspected specifically for that to be able to do it. So just some general statistics, and this is some of these numbers you guys have seen. We started last year with 16, 17, and I've just kind of moved things forward. So for 2017, we had 3,663 intakes. And the way our program generates this is those intakes are new intakes. That doesn't include if we picked up a stray six months ago and we picked up another one this month, it doesn't include that secondary intake. So there's a lot of people that have adopted animals from the shelter. That animal's already in the system. So if we pick that animal up as a stray, it doesn't show as a new intake. And it happens more often than you would think. So this number gives you a basic idea. Those are actual, brand-new, first-time-in-the-system recordings of animals entering the shelter. In 2017, we did 864 adoptions. We put 84 animals in foster and all of those were adopted out at some point, either that year or the following year. We had 403 animals reclaimed by their owners. 218 were transferred to rescues throughout the United States. We have over 100 rescues that we work with. If we can't find homes for them locally, we contact rescues that are breed-specific. We contact general rescues that will take all species and all breeds of animals. We have flown animals to New Jersey, Maryland, all in the upper northern part of the country. They actually have laws inside city limits where all animals must be spayed or neutered. And you're not allowed to breed your animals without specific permits, period, end of story. So they don't have puppies. So when we have animals and we have an influx of puppies, we can contact some of our rescues and tell them what we've got. And they take care of the transport and the cost of that, and they will fly those animals up north or work with transports to, to get them from here to where they need to go to get homes. And in 2017, we had 2,190 animals that were euthanized. In 2018, we had 3,234 intakes, 724 adoptions, 36 animals went into foster, 298 were reclaimed by their owners, 139 were transferred to rescue, and 2,187 euthanized. So this next chart just shows January through May 31st. I prepared this presentation the first week in June. So that shows up to those first five months of full intakes. We had 1,257. We've done 349 adoptions through those five months. May was actually a really big month for us on adoptions. We work with the high school. They have a program where they host an adoption event. It's the only Saturday for the entire year that we're open for business. But they host the event. They coordinate all of the advertisement and they have people come out and they do hot dogs and snow cones. And they make it a family fun day at the animal shelter. And just for that one specific day, we received 39 applications that were approved in animals that were adopted for that one day. So we had over 80 adoptions in May, which is more than double what we normally do. We had 22 animals that have gone into foster so far. 119 reclaimed by their owners, 66 transferred to rescue, and only 683 so far this year that, through May, that have been euthanized. Now we are coming into a season, we usually kind of have a leveling out and then an influx around the fall. It kind of correlates with the breeding times of the animals. So usually spring and then fall, we have kind of upswings in our breeding populations. And then because of that, we have increases in our shelter intakes and ultimately our euthanizations. In trends, 2019, the shelter staff has received 100, between 169 and 350 animals per month. So it averages out to about 8.12 per day. There's usually a surge, like I said, twice a year, once in the spring and another in the fall. And adoptions increase at the beginning of each regular college semester and during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Do you all have any questions?
Public first.
For her? No, because this is just a presentation.
I do. Going back to rabies, we are the designated local rabies control authority. I recently was exposed to bats and befriended a whole family of them. So we got to kind of walk through that process.
Yes, don't touch.
Not so fun, yes. And I was a little shocked to find out the CDC recommends even if you're exposed to it while you're sleeping, you need to go get the vaccinations because your teeth feel like little hypothermia needles. You wouldn't know if you're exposed.
You would not know. And there have been people that have actually handled bats and were bitten. And without a magnifying glass, you could not see the bite. You didn't know you were bitten. It feels more like sandpaper because their teeth and their claws are so tiny that you don't, you don't understand or realize that you have been bitten and that you have now been potentially exposed to rabies. And especially with bats, they recommend that you go through that post-exposure treatment. And if, if we can't get a sample, if you can't catch the bat, then that's a definite, you need to start it right now. Bats are one of the high-risk species for rabies. We have raccoons, skunks, foxes and coyotes as well as high-risk species in Texas. We have had positive rabies here in Nacogdoches with, generally with skunks and with bats. And we've had a few people since I've been at the shelter that have had to undergo the post-exposure treatment. It's very, very expensive. For an average 170-pound person at this time, the cost of those vaccines, because it's a series, is approximately $6,000. So it is very, very expensive. But if you don't get them and you have a positive animal that's bitten you, your chances are slim. So.
Go ahead.
I would say it is painful financially. I can, as someone who weighs more than 170, I can tell you it costs a little bit more than that.
It definitely goes by weight. And the H rig is the initial shot that you get, and that's the one that's the most expensive. And then the follow-up shots are about $380 per shot.
Exactly. I'm painfully paying for that right now.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, one thing that was a little surprising is the ER wasn't quite sure how to handle that.
They have no idea.
They have no idea. That, that threw me for a loop a little bit. My wife wasn't exactly thrilled that I mentioned that I found a bat after all the doctor's offices were closed. So we went to the ER and they really didn't know. Could you speak to what the process should be there? I know that you guys are involved to some extent as well as the health department.
They understand their legal responsibility is if there's a bite, they call animal control. That's, that's what they do. They don't have access to the medication. They can't get it in. They don't keep it in stock. It's too expensive to do that and to keep it on hand. So what happens is they call us, they notify us about the bite. We contact the state. If we have a bat and we can send it in for testing, we can get those results back in, in 24 to 48 hours. So it's very quick. It's very, you know, if you don't need the shots, then absolutely you don't get them. If the pause, if the bat was negative, then there's no reason for you to take the shots. If we don't have access to that animal, if the animal, say, flies off, you can't find it, something along those lines. And we've had people smash them into oblivion and there's nothing left to test. They're small and you have to have brain matter to test. But we submit those animals to the state. They will do the testing. And if it comes back negative, there's nothing else you need to do. If it comes back positive, then they're gonna get with you. They're gonna explain to you, this is what you need to do. Your doctor needs to contact these pharmacies. They can get that ordered. They'll get it in. And then they can actually do, you can take that medication to your physician and they'll do the vaccines there in the clinic.
I'm, I'm very familiar with the process. I was a little thrown for a loop about how much it costs. That was wild.
It's not something.
Prescription insurance doesn't cover it. It's tough.
I can't make the insurance companies pay that, but it's, it is very expensive. And I think because it is such a high-dollar product and it's so seldomly used, they don't manufacture it in bulk. So the cost is still way up there. Thankfully, they have pretty much eradicated rabies and at least the canine variant. And we haven't seen a canine positive test in this county since I've been at the shelter. We have, like I said, we've had bats and skunks, but nothing in the canine realm. So they're making progress and they're getting those things taken care of. And with medical advancements, maybe one of these days they'll have something that can prevent that outright. Unfortunately, we're not there yet.
Sure. Thank you.
This is not a fun topic, but on the euthanasia, I just would like to know, what's the, the process for deciding which animals get euthanized and when?
Usually it's health and temperament primarily. We're a shelter with limited space, so we have to make that call. We usually do it in teams. We never have one person that makes that call on their own. It's just too much to deal with. So we go through, we look at the animals individually. Is this animal healthy? Does it have heartworms? That's one of those prohibiting factors where the general person that walks into the shelter that's adopting a dog that costs $40 to adopt is not gonna turn around for a large dog and sink $500 into heartworm treatments. So when we have to pull, we're pulling animals that are already sick when they come to us. We're pulling animals that have a condition that's not life-threatening or contagious to the other animals, but they're in the shelter. But they're also taking up a space that a healthy animal could occupy and that is more likely to be adopted. Temperament, if an animal tends to be a little food aggressive, that animal can still be adopted. We just let the people know that you need to separate this animal before you feed it. Don't feed it with other animals. Don't have your kids around. But we, we try to do everything in a safe manner and make sure that people understand, as much as we know about the dogs, they understand that this is what they're taking into their home. If they have aggression issues with people, they absolutely do not go up for adoption. So it's, and then when it comes down to space, it's who's been on the shelter long enough? Which ones do we see that are getting adopted and having interest and that kind of thing? So it's kind of a, typically black dogs are the least likely to get adopted. So whether it's a pit bull, whether it's a lab, whether it's just a plain old black, like a black shepherd, if it's a solid color, it's less likely to be adopted for some reason. I don't know why. It's just the way it happens.
Thank you.
I guess my concern originally was, there's longevity, there's no part in utilization as to when you put them to rest?
We don't. If we have the space, we don't want to euthanize healthy animals if we don't have to. We do our best to get them out as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, like I said, we do have a limited amount of space and we have to make that call. And we usually try to keep the shelter at half-capacity in some of our rooms because we have to shift to clean. It expedites the cleaning process. If we had, if we had everything at full capacity all the time, we would have to pull in portable kennels, load the animals into those portable kennels, then clean the kennels that they're occupying, then move the animals back, then clean the portable kennels. So if we keep everything at half-staff, we can take the ones on this half, move them to the other side, clean one set of kennels. The next day, they go back. And it makes, it makes it less stressful on our kennel attendants. It expedites, expedites the cleaning process and we can get through the day much quicker, get the shelter open and clean before we open the front doors. And it also keeps our numbers down. If we kept it at full staffing throughout the shelter, we would have a lot more animals and a lot more being euthanized.
Go ahead. It's a question a minute ago. Like if you were bitten by, say, a scot. Is there a, and you didn't capture the scot. Is there a pre-treatment plan and a post-treatment plan?
There is. There is. Our shelter employees have had the pre, we have a couple of new ones that are going to be getting those here in the next month or so. I have been vaccinated for pre-exposure. That, that process is about $1,000. So you don't have to have that initial, the H rig, which is the initial preventative and then the follow-up shots that go along with that. You just have the secondary shot. So it's still a series of three vaccines at the $380 apiece, but we're not having to have that initial expensive portion of the shot. And that builds our antibodies to prevent us from getting it. Now, if we are bitten, having had the pre-exposure, then all we have to have is a booster, which is the $380 shot and it's a one-time deal. So like my titers were tested this year and I'm low, so I need to go back in and get a booster. So my vaccine is gonna be $384 this year, but I won't have to go through the series again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Number 11, report from our development office. Good evening, Ms. Middlebrook. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. I am Anna Middlebrook. I am the Director of Development. And I have to tell you, when you voted last fall to create this office, I was really excited. Not only because I was looking for a job, but also because it's the beginning of a new way to look at growth within the city of Nacogdoches. So thank you. Thank you for being open-minded in your vision for Nacogdoches. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to launch this office. Because this is a new position within the city, it's important to talk about the function of the development office. We are applying the same ideas of business development to public service. And while it is a new evolving idea, the two work very well together. Development is growth and it's really as simple as that. As the council, you are always looking for ways for Nacogdoches to grow either economically or through city planning and even with ideas. With your leadership, staff implements ways to be innovative in the services that the city provides. In business, one looks for growth opportunities by catering to their customer. Businesses ask themselves what their customers want. Once you answer that question, the quest to fill that with the very best, best product becomes the goal. In business, when you provide what your customer wants, your company will see growth. The city government, we ask ourselves the same question. What does the, the public want? While it may not be as straightforward as a business, we are still providing something that our customers or residents want. You can think of each department as its own mini-business. The water department seeks to provide a service for a reasonable cost, but with an exceptional product. The fire and police department work to keep residents safe, clear accidents, do investigations and inspections. The CVB promotes tourism and works to increase the number of visitors to our town. Management at the city looks at each of these departments or businesses and thinks about how to make each one function more efficiently at the best cost ratio and according to how the council perceives the needs of the public. In some ways, it's a daunting task to look at all these mini-businesses and prioritize their need for growth, evolution and change. But your staff here at the city is always up for the challenge. So the first function of the development office is to look for the needs within each department. Sometimes the needs are straightforward. A department simply needs something to operate more efficiently. If we had another brush truck, the tree limbs would be picked up more regularly and that would benefit the public. If we had a city vehicle, the CVB and airport could offer transportation to the guests. Other needs were more like wants, but are still very important when we consider the progress of our town. If we had a training facility for our first responders, we could train safely and partner with surrounding towns to utilize resources. Sometimes it's difficult to determine if something is a need or a want, so we looked and consider the importance to the public. If something is, the public is asking for, it should be something that we look into. Once the city needs are established, the next task of the development office is to look into funding. Our budget doesn't have unlimited resources. We're not that kind of government. There are needs and wants that are not found their way into the department's budget. So an item or program has to be put on the shelf and that waiting hinders progress. The development office will seek outside funding to provide avenues for progress within the city. There is a growth trend of philanthropic support for public services. This allows city to pursue initiatives which otherwise might not be possible. Private funding for the city is a case-by-case infusion, which otherwise is not intended to permanently replace the tax-funded public services. This outside funding can make otherwise unreachable advancement goals very possible. Outside funding includes grants, corporate donations, philanthropic organizations. One of the goals of the department office, development office, is to infuse Nacogdoches money outside of our tax base. We know Nacogdoches is wonderful. We are already invested here and our residents give back. We need to promote ourselves to those resources outside the city limits. Other businesses, foundations, civic organizations that could see the potential in Nacogdoches and choose to invest here. I was especially pleased that you decided on a development office and not merely a fundraising position. Fundraising is very much a part of development, but is a facilitator for the growth that Nacogdoches wants. My personal philosophy on giving, that giving, is that you see the need for projects and you My personal philosophy on giving, that giving, is that you see the need for projects and you match those opportunities to the appropriate funding. Whether it is a person who might have a passion in an area or a foundation whose mission is to fund similar projects, the donor guides the request. I don't think our residents would appreciate me very much if they thought I was constantly trying to get more out of them. But they will work with us if we first listen to their desires and what is important to them. This is how we involve our customers, our residents. We don't all give in the same way. Some have extra funds and give with their pocketbooks. Some have ideas and give with their innovation. Some have time and they give with their volunteer hours. All of these donations combine to make us a highly functioning team. The council has taken great strides in listening and involving the public. Now we take those ideas, find funding and advance our town into the future. The old adage that Nacogdoches stands in the way of growth simply is not true. We have asked for public involvement and you are receiving it. My goal for the development office is to be a liaison to the public. When the public is participating, they achieve a level of ownership that their mailing address does not afford them. When the public sees, wants to see a paved path through Festival Park and works to raise the funds, staff works with them to complete that trail. If the public wants to see a fire station and works to get those funds, staff will work overtime to accomplish that. And the burden doesn't lie with the public. We become a team to determine the feasibility of a project, find the funding and work to complete that project. When the project is complete, Nacogdoches will see growth. In launching the development office, I'm looking into the needs of each department, establishing a history of giving for the previous years and initiating a system so that there is an organization to the way the city asks for and receives donations. In the future, the goal is to have a cohesion of requests, acknowledgements and completion of projects. Often privately funded projects require the coordination among several city departments. And the priorities can be different within those departments, slowing down progress. The tasks then are hard to oversee, so the development office can oversee these publicly initiated projects to ensure that they don't get lost in the day-to-day duties of the staff. Last year was a particularly benevolent year for the city with the culmination of two very big projects. Sein Hill Church received a large donation, which was the effort of twenty-five years' worth of fundraising. And likewise, Splash Pad completed its project goal. My office gets to work with organizations such as the Nacogdoches Historical Foundation and the Parks Abbot Cassie League, so that once they reach such a momentous goal, they are able to continue the journey with the city and see those projects through to completion. Currently this year, the city has seen fifty thousand dollars in donations, sixteen thousand in in-kind giving. And grants will be a focus for the department. Grants have been awarded, have been around two hundred and fifteen thousand since January. And applying for grants is a numbers game. The more grants we apply for, the more we are likely to receive. If we don't apply, can't get the money. And so we will attempt to apply for grants that become available to reach those goals in the departments. So what are the goals for the development office? Obviously, it's a bazillion dollars, but it may take a few years to work up to that number. And until we reach that goal, the development office will continue to work with the public, listen to their ideas, infuse our community with outside funding sources and plan for the growth and development of Nacogdoches. So now that you have the mental picture of bazillion dollars, I'll step aside for comments.
Since this is a new office, is there anyone, are there any comments from the public? Counsel, questions and comments?
So we're at two fifteen this year for grants. Do you know roughly what we, where we've been living the last two, three, four years?
It fluctuates. There are a lot of small grants. Night vision goggles, like running around thirty thousand dollars, that sort of thing. I know since the beginning of the fiscal year, it, we're up to around three thirty in grants. So this two fifteen number is just from January when I started.
Awesome. Way to go.
Are most of those grants state and federal or are they private foundation?
Currently, yeah, currently, I think most of the grants that we have received have been government grants. But we will be looking at all types of grants now, really expanding, looking at those needs of the department and expanding how we look to look for grants. I don't necessarily consider, say, a donation from a local source like the Bright Foundation necessarily a grant. I don't put that in that category, but it certainly is a donation.
Anything else? So are you enjoying it?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So it's a good thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we are excited you're here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, number twelve, Census 2020 Committee Update. Dr. Mahaffey.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Amy Mahaffey and I am our Communications and Main Street Director. And I'm coming here to you this evening at the end of a rather long agenda, so I will try to keep this short and sweet. But I'm just very excited to share with you about the committee that has been formulated earlier this year. You two lovely ladies are on that committee and this is just a really great chance for us to begin a conversation about the census and why it's so important. Well, you see a lot of information. Many of you have had experience with the census. We've all probably filled one out and there's obvious benefits to this, such as the way that the legislator is appropriated and different federal funds. And so I think the story here and what's really exciting and what you all want to hear about is the fact that your, your community has taken a lot of ownership over the census. And it's really important, we've had a lot of discussions in this room about diversity in different populations and making sure that we establish trust with different populations. We can't always affect what happens at the federal level and this national conversation that's taking place around the census, but I am very confident, as I know you two ladies are as well, because we've had these discussions, that we can help to try to bridge that gap. And we have a lot of really great relationships that are present in this community. And so this committee is really serving to bridge the gap. The census assigns a partnership specialist and they come and meet with us and they're in a lot of different communities. And they're a really great resource, but they don't know our community in the way that we do. And so this committee that you, you've read about and gotten information about is rather small and that is by design. That's so that we can try and then establish subcommittees to reach different populations. And so some of those subcommittees include the school districts, faith-based organizations, and then of course, the kind of elephant in the room, which is S F A. And so people always talk about, well, the college students aren't counted, or maybe they are counted, or we don't really know. And I'm happy to say, and we actually discussed this on the podcast this week as a part of beginning this conversation, that S F A students are encouraged to fill out their census here. This is where they lay their head nine months out of the year, if not more. And that's a big education part. And so we have some really great partners at S F A that are already planning on how to reach the students in the spring. And so they will formulate their committees in the fall. And we've talked about a lot of really great ways to reach the students. And we've also talked about a lot of ways to reach people that may not have access to traditional means. So including like the homeless population that we've discussed. There are different mechanisms to report group quarters, such as God Tell, the jail and even the dorms at S F A. And so there are a lot of moving pieces to this, but I think it's just a really exciting aspect to the census that we all know how important it is and how much it provides, can provide services to our community. And it's just a really great first step. This is also the first time ever that the census will be available on your smartphone and on a computer. And that will also, I believe, help us reach different populations. The easier you make things in this technological world, the more inclined people are to fill it out. And so, and as the partnership specialist said to us, if you don't want anybody coming knocking on your door, which will happen, fill it out online and then we're good. And so the, I was looking this afternoon, the rates for the past two census in Nacogdoches County are traditionally pretty underrepresented. And so the goal here is they're in the high sixties and the goal here is obviously to go well above that so that we're well represented and have an accurate count of our community. So I'm happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Is there anyone here that has a comment about the, our beginning this discussion about the census? Okay, none. Counsel, questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
When you do a census in a household, does like the leader of the household fill out the census for everybody?
I believe so. I believe there's several forms and so I, last time I filled out the census, I was one in my own household in college. So I don't know the answer to that, but I would presume that it's, it's the head of household that fills out for everybody that lives in the home.
And when we say live in the home, like a college student. And that was basically my question now is, that parent is going to fill out that form and include all of the family members, whether that child is in college or not.
Yes.
And then when the kid in college is going to fill out a form?
That is the million-dollar question. And that's part of why Mayor Brophy felt it was so important to discuss with S F A early on. It's not just an education component of sit here and fill out this form in your dorm room. It's a, sit here and fill out this form and tell your parents that you're filling it out in Nacogdoches and this is your home. And so they have ways to, of course, account for a little bit of duplication. So if my mom, who doesn't know if she used her iPhone correctly, which is not a made-up story, she may or may not know that she filled it out or submitted it, and so she may fill out the paper one too. And so there is a little bit of that as well. And they have some really great ways to measure that and kind of account for duplication.
There's a lot of new things this year too that are very exciting. She mentioned it, being able to do it online. But one of the things that I think is going to help us keep motivated is that we can see on a daily basis who, what, how the reporting is coming in. And that's never been done before. So that, I mean, it's just caught up. So that's going to be great for us to see.
You mentioned that we were at about sixty percent reporting. Is that fairly typical for rural East Texas or for urban areas? And then, does that mean that we have like fifty thousand people?
I like your math.
Trying to help out Larissa a little bit.
You know, they, they showed us a map, that interactive map, and we, we are underrepresented. And it is presumably the entire East Texas region, but Nacogdoches in particular was a, was a challenge. And so that's why, starting early and really getting, making sure we have boots on the ground that have these stress relationships, do a lot of educating. And so unfortunately, that doesn't mean that we are underrepresented and that, of course, there's a little bit of margin of error. But I wish the math worked like that. That would be awesome.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you very much for that update. Number thirteen, Presentation of Third Quarter of Two Thousand Eighteen Nineteen Fiscal Year Financial Update. Mr. Jeffers, good evening.
Madam Mayor, City Council. If I may, Madam Mayor, I'm going to do the quarterly financial report, third quarter financial report and immediately go into the budget because the third quarter financial report is really pretty brief. And it's positive. It shows where we are. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Pam Kerbo, your Director of Finance, and her staff. They do an extraordinary job as well as the department heads in building the budget. Typically, I'm at the end of the process and I'm the bad guy that pulls out a red pen. Some say that I enjoy it. Maybe I do sometimes. You know, Ms. Kerbo does all the work and what I am, I'm the pretty face that makes the presentation. I thought that you would look up on that, Councilmember Bolden. You don't need to make any comment. Looking at the general fund, we are where we need to be on revenues. Property tax always comes in early in the fiscal year. Our sales tax is really tight. We're anticipating that we will meet budget, but we may be off a smidgen. You can see the building permits is down thirty-three percent, but in the overall scope of the general fund revenues, that is a smaller item. Therefore, if it remains down, it does not hurt our projections that we're going to raise the revenues that we anticipated in the general fund. When we look at expenditures, we are within expectations across the board. We will see savings again because of vacant positions. We have difficulty throughout the fiscal year in filling many of our vacant positions. Doesn't make any difference whether it's public safety or in our maintenance departments. That problem exists nationally and it's primarily because of the baby boomers retiring and there's not as many people there lined up to take their places. And also, the younger generations aren't as mobile as baby boomer, baby boomers were. When we look at the utility fund, water sales is down about three percent, as well as overall revenues are down about two percent. Had a wet year, but we are starting to sell water now. We don't anticipate that there will be any difficulties in meeting budget or at least being awfully close. And so we're not expecting any significant issues. With expenses, we are within expectations. And the sanitation fund, we're good and good. Revenues are where we projected they would be and expenses are within expectations. Now to the fund part, the proposed budget. And keep in mind that this is a very high overview. At the next city council meeting, we'll begin doing our best to give you too many numbers and to put you asleep, but we'll shock you awake periodically with some interesting information. The proposed budget, the tax rate is down a very small amount, but that's misleading. That's the tax rate. It's the effective tax rate that we need to pay attention to. There has, was a reappraisal this year. Therefore, if your tax rate stays the same and your appraisal goes up, then you've had a tax increase. That's simple math, as well as it's what the law says. So we are recommending that the effective tax rate be fifty, or excuse me, sixty-one point four cents. That compared to the effective tax rate of fifty-seven or fifty-eight cents. That means that you're having a tax increase of a little bit less than four cents. But we'll talk a whole lot more about that when we get into the budget presentation for the public hearing and then the budget workshop at the next city council meeting. With the general fund, looking at overall revenues, you can see property tax is the biggest provider of revenue. Sales tax, second with twenty-four percent. And then there's that purple animal, inter-fund transfers, twenty-one percent. I know that there was considerable discussion last fiscal year about why we do that. And really, it's pretty straightforward that with the general fund, you have the mayor and the council, the city secretary, the city attorney, the city manager, the finance department and other departments that, engineering is a, is a large one, that provides services or functions to all of the funds. So we don't do detailed accounting as to how many hours did the city manager work on the general fund and the sanitation fund and the utility fund on a daily basis. We just make an assumption that we're going to divide those expenses three ways. So the utility fund, enterprise fund, and the sanitation fund and enterprise fund transfers money, the intergovernmental transfer to the general fund. And without it, you can see that the budget would not be balanced and we would have to do some drastic service cuts and/or there be a significant tax increase. Our fund transfers are higher than what that simple formula that I have described. And it's been that way for years. And once again, in order to get out of that, got to increase taxes, leave that money in the utility fund, might result in a rate reduction. But our budget is all intertwined and quite frankly, I don't think that it's worth, worth, uh, worth the grief in order to achieve that. If the council were to say at some future meeting that that should be a go, then we would devise a plan and show you how to get there. When we look at general fund, operational expenses, public safety takes up almost sixty percent of the expenditures in the general fund, followed by general government, which is city council, city attorney, city manager, city secretary, finance department. followed by general government, which is city council, city attorney, city manager, city secretary, finance department, et cetera. So but public safety, quite frankly, simply because they have the most employees, police and fire and animal control, that's why they're the largest part of the budget. And you begin to understand the impact that personnel cost has on the budget. When we look at the general fund operational expenditures, you can see that personnel takes up 80% of the total money that we spend. Contractual services comes in at 10%. And then you can see the other dispersion of those expenses. When we look at the general fund proposed capital improvements, this is a rather modest expenditures because of limited funds. But you can see the items proposed as far as capital equipment versus capital improvements. And those are total capital of a little bit over a million dollars. And we'll talk about each of those items and others in greater detail when we get into the budget workshop. And the utility fund, the revenues of 20 million plus. Those revenues are pretty well divided between water charges and sewer charges. Once again, this is an enterprise fund, so we get to eat what we kill. If we don't generate revenue, then we don't have money to expend. Therefore, you have to increase those rates or cut expenses, or you do some of both. Looking at proposed expenses by department, you can see that the interfund transfers that we talked about a little while ago was at 25% debt service for monies that we have borrowed to make improvements in the water and sewer funds. And we mentioned that the council might want to have a discussion next fiscal year about considering whether or not it's time for another bond issue or to borrow money through other mechanisms. Water production takes up 16%, and wastewater treatment takes up 14%. Looking at proposed expenses by classification, there's that pesky interfund transfer again. Sundry charges, which is miscellaneous, and personnel cost takes up 19%. You don't see the high personnel cost in the utility fund, simply because we rely an awful lot on technology to do what we do, and we don't have to have as many employees as the general fund has. Utility fund proposed capital expenses, and this doesn't take into consideration projects that are being carried over, but we'll go into those in greater depth when we have the budget workshop. But you can see what the capital equipment and capital improvements are. And, you know, water and wastewater distribution, they take up the bulk of the capital improvements in the utility fund. The sanitation fund, a little bit over $6 million, and it's kind of a easy one. We have the sanitation charges, which takes 80% of the pie chart on sanitation fund revenues. Sanitation fund proposed expenses by the department. The interfund transfer is 50% in the sanitation fund, simply because it's a smaller number. So, but the number from utility fund and sanitation fund is the same. Sanitation fund collection is 23%, and disposal, that's the landfill, is at 18%. Sanitation fund proposed expenses by classification, there's the pesky interfund transfers. Again, personnel cost is at 23%. Contractual services is at 14%, making up for almost $5 million in expenses. Sanitation fund on capital equipment, you have operations of $100,000 and then depreciation, which we set aside money to buy garbage trucks. It's part of the rate base, which it should be. But 60, $660,000 for two new refuse trucks. It is important that we keep relatively new trucks on the road. If you don't, then you need to have more trucks, because you always have some that are broken down and in the shop. And the City Council has done a great job in providing our employees with a reliable fleet. And of all the services that we provide, I guess other than water, if you don't pick up your trash, you get phone calls. But if you have a pothole, you may or may not call. If the park needs to be mowed, you may or may not call. But once again, if you don't pick up the trash, then we get phone calls. And very seldom do we get any significant complaints. One of the items that we said that we had talked about this year is whether or not an additional brush truck needs to be added. And so that item, as well as whether or not we need an additional street sweeper, will be added for discussion. You add those, there's an expense. So since it's in the sanitation fund and the budget is typically a little bit tighter than the other funds, but it's not this year, and we'll explain why later, then you would see an, for a brush truck, typically you would see an increase in the sanitation charge to the residents on a monthly basis. It's the same if we added a street sweeper. What we're asking the council to do tonight is to set the budget calendar. That means that there will be a budget workshop and a public hearing on August the 20th. We'll do the public hearing first. That sounds a little backwards, but the workshop, public is more than welcome to set through that process. But the workshop is more for the council to do a deep dive. And also, it's informative for the public. And hopefully, Nicole will agree to sit here and be punished with us as we do the budget workshop, so she can report to the masses. There will be a second public hearing on September the 3rd. Both of those hearings will start at 5:30 PM. And then the budget will be considered for adoption on August 17th, as well as any fee schedule adjustments, and then also to ratify the tax rate. I would ask the council to remember that the single most important policy document that you adopt on an annual basis is the budget, because you determine the level of services that are going to be provided to the citizens. And there's not very many things that are more important to that. You know, with the budget workshop, we'll begin talking about some long-term strategies. If you want to consider changing service delivery or adding a service or taking away a service, then that's what the budget workshop is for. Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to be interrogated by the council after you have taken public comment.
Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Council, any comments or questions? Okay. Then, we would like to thank all of you for attending. We are going to go into executive session and...
We need a motion on the budget calendar, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I am so sorry. Thank you very much. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the budget calendar as presented.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number 14 as presented. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, thank you all for attending. You are welcome to wait, but we are going to go into executive session, and it is now 7:29.